Good evening. My name is Peggy Kell, and I'm the Voter Service Chair for the Oak Park River Forest League Women Voters. Tonight, we will be holding a candidate forum for the contested April 1st election with the Oak Park River Forest High School Board. There are six candidates running for four open seats. A recording of this evening will be posted on our website at L W V O P R F dot org and on the library's website for later viewing by voters. The League does not endorse candidates, but it does believe that voters should hear from those that are running to represent them. Please visit our website for links to view all of our other recorded forums in the contested Oak Park races. You can submit questions during this forum via the question option on Zoom. The chat will not be alive. The Oak Park Library is our valued partner in these forums, and thanks to Rashmi Swain for all her help with the scheduling and technology for this event, and Bridget Abdat will be our timer tonight. Candidates will start with one-minute opening statements, followed by questions for all, and finishing with a one-minute closing statement. We will start in alphabetical order and then rotate through the candidates. The candidates tonight are Fred Arkin, Josh Gertz, Nate Melman, Kathleen Odell, David Shasma, and Audrey Williams Lee. And Fred, you are going to start first with the one-minute opening statement.
Can you hear me? Okay, I'm ready to go. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for doing this again. I think it's my fourth time I've been before you, and we appreciate you being able to get out to the community. I'm a graduate of Oak Park River Forest High School, and I've chosen to live most of my life in District 200. I place a very high value on the education I received at O P R F that allowed me to go on to the Olend School of Business at Washington University in St. Louis. I'm a seasoned business professional and a community volunteer. My entire career has been spent in the customer service business. My parents also taught me at a very young age the importance of community service. I have carried on their tradition of community involvement by being committed, being a committed volunteer and working directly with youth since the late nineteen seventies. I'm running for the board to ensure that future generations will have the same opportunity that I had, right, to receive a highest-quality education.
Thank you. Josh?
Thank you. Thanks to Oak Park Public Library as well as the League of Women Voters. My name is Josh Gertz. I'm an employee benefits attorney of ten years. I'm a married father of three future Huskies. This is my first time attempting to run for elected office. So I hope that I can earn your trust to make D two hundred the best it can be. I'm running on a informal slate with my colleague Nathan Melman, and our campaign's really simple. First, safety. We want to make sure that every child feels safe within those, within those walls. That means physically as well as mentally, emotionally, socially. We want to make sure that the academics challenge every child and are appropriate for that child. We currently are, have a performance gap between our white students and our students of color that we need to narrow. Lastly, we want to be responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars. Our levy is very high, and we want to make sure to keep it controlled moving forward.
Thank you. Nate?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Peggy, and everybody involved with the League of Women Voters. I'm Nate Melman. I'm a husband and father of three, two O P R F graduates, and one who's currently still at the high school. I'm a former defense attorney, assistant attorney general, prosecutor, employment litigator, labor relations manager, and a military officer for almost thirty years before retiring as a colonel. I have created and taught classes. Currently, I'm a judge. My family and I have been residents of Oak Park and River Forest for over twenty years. I have been a member of the high school's community council since two thousand twenty-one and a River Forest Fire and Police Commissioner since two thousand twenty-two. Our kids deserve a school system that works for everyone. That's why I'm running for the school board. My priorities are simple but essential: keeping all our kids safe, ensuring every student has a challenging academic environment that sets them up for success, and safeguarding taxpayer dollars to maximize resources for our schools while respecting the community's trust. Together, we can create schools that are safe, strong, and supportive for every child and every family.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Hi, everyone, and thank you again to the League of Women Voters and everyone for giving up an hour this evening to come and hear this forum. My name is Kathleen Odell, and I am a sixteen-year resident of Oak Park. I have two children who are students at O P R F, a senior and a freshman. Professionally, I am a professor of economics and also serve as associate provost at Dominican University. So in addition to a PhD in economics and many years teaching in higher ed, I also have about ten years of academic administration experience, managing budgets, strategic planning, and similar activities at the university level. For the past two years, I've been a member of O P R F's Community Finance Committee. I also serve as a commissioner on the Village of Oak Park Energy and Environment Commission, and I'm running for the board as a way to share both my financial skills and my passion for public education with the community.
Thank you. David?
Thanks to the League of Women Voters and the library for sponsoring this event. Hi, I'm Dave Shasma, twenty-five-year resident of Oak Park, married to Tara, and the third of our children graduates from O P R F in May. I've been teaching high school and university English for more than four decades, and I'm currently a professor of English and the Director of English Education at U I C, where I offer teaching methods courses and literature courses, preparing students to become English teachers in the Chicago area. So I have a lifelong commitment to public schools, and I have taught at major universities. But I also have more than just a commitment to educational excellence in that traditional sense. I have two children from a previous marriage. Three of my five children are variously on the autism spectrum, and one has a five oh four, so I'm very familiar with the special ed resources in D two hundred and want to work on this D E I issue on the board. Also, as my wife is an electrician and one of my sons set aside several acceptances to universities to become an electrician, I also have an interest in expanding resources for the trades for our students. I'm so glad to be here tonight.
Thank you. Audrey?
Hi. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to our hosts and to all of you for being here. I'm Audrey Williams Lee. I professionally am a H R executive. I've worked primarily for large global companies, and I'm also on the D two hundred board, having been appointed in July of twenty-three. My husband Byron and I are Oak Park residents, and we have two sons, a twenty-nineteen graduate, as well as a current junior at the high school. I'm really pleased to have the opportunity to be before you tonight as a candidate because two of the candidates sought to have me removed from the ballot on a technicality. And while it was legal, in my view, it was wrong. It was cowardly. They tried to guarantee themselves seats on the board by preempting your ability as voters to make a choice about who you'd like to have on the board. And this reflects a level of narcissism that I think is bad for our community and for our students. You're going to hear a lot of differences tonight as we speak on the issues, but the biggest difference, in my opinion, is going to be character.
Thank you. Our first question will start, Josh. You're going to answer it first. Project Two has decreased the school's reserve balance. With discussions already starting on Project Three, where would funding for this project come from?
Thank you. To the extent that we still have funding in, in the way of our municipal bonds that we've issued, we would start with that. Hopefully, we can keep it under control. If we do need more than that, not going to continue to operate out of the operating expenses. We're going to go to referendum if we need more funds for capital expenditures. I think it's important not only to ask the voters, but also to listen to the voters and to make sure that they have a say. If they deny us, then we will have to go back to the drawing board and find either a more affordable measure, or we're going to have to, you know, delay Project Two, or, sorry, Project Three. It may limit the scope, but, or find alternative designs or solutions for it. But absolutely, capital expenditures should go to referendum.
Thank you. Nate?
Yes, so the board should follow best practices and issue referendum bonds to fund Project Three and any other capital projects that may come across us in the future. And the board should communicate the referendums, all referendums, transparently to the community. We spent more than we were, we budgeted for Project One. It was budgeted for thirty-two point six million dollars in two thousand. In two thousand and four, we paid twenty-nine percent more at forty-two million dollars. Past is prologue, and the community knows this. The number-one concern that we have on the financial level for the board is to make sure we earn our community's trust back, and Josh and I are going to do that. We're going to look at the invoices. If we need to challenge them, we're going to challenge them for Project Two. We've got some other ideas to make sure we are getting the biggest bang for the buck, for the buck. But we spend over twenty-five thousand dollars for each student, and we want to make sure as much of that money is going to students and teachers.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Thank you. So, thank you, Peggy, for mentioning the fund balance. So I just want to highlight that, you know, for many years, O P R F has had a very large, what's called the fund balance, which is kind of extra, extra money that has been collected but not expended. And within the last few years, the, the board has planned so that by the end of the spending on Project Two, that fund balance will be between the mandated limits of twenty-five and fifty percent of the operating budget, which is really a best practice and a great target and, you know, great for the community to have that fund balance right-sized to that twenty-five to fifty percent level. So that's excellent, and I agree that additional capital projects will have to be funded through debt because there, we don't have the outsized fund balance anymore to draw from, which means debt will be necessary to fund future capital projects.
Thank you. Dave?
Well, everything that Kathleen said, I might say. I mean, taxes are high, and it's a concern for me. I don't know well whether I'll always be able to live in Oak Park, so it's, it's something that I'm aware of all the time. I think it's, in principle, I think that referenda are appropriate for consulting people about how we move forward with, with costs. I think that we've tried very hard to do that with the projects so far, and I think that we'll try to be even more transparent in the, in the, in the future as, as things move forward.
Thank you. Audrey?
Hi. So one thing I want to share is with Project One, the cost overruns were intentional, and they were because we pulled forward items that were in future projects to put in Project One to do things like improve accessibility for our most vulnerable kids. And so as we go forward and looking at Project Two, we have a dashboard, and we have a big focus on making sure we're on time and on budget. I don't anticipate any need to expand Project Two the way we had to do with Project One, but if we were, we're very transparent. The information is in the board minutes. It's on the website, and you can get that information very clearly to understand where those costs went. Kathleen, you know, she said it really well with our large fund balance that gave us the opportunity to finance Project Two differently. Going forward, we'll keep our fund balance where it should be, and we would have to go to referendum to actually, you know, look at any other financing that we need. And on the tax side, for the past decade, we've taken less than the full tax levy available to us for our district to make sure that we're considerate of our voters.
Thank you. Fred? You have to unmute yourself, Fred.
Sorry about that. It's been a couple of years since I'm used to doing these. Just to, to restate in a little different way, Project One was not on the board when, when, when Project One was being built. The, the cost overruns, they really weren't cost overruns. There was additional scope of work that was added to the project intentionally by the board at that time. All right, so that, that is not any kind of malfeasance by the contractor or the board. They were intentionally added, and Audrey gave an explanation of what they were. Going forward, I think one of the things that we've done in, in Project Two is we've partnered with the Imagine Foundation, who is raising a considerable amount of money. We don't know what the scope of Project Three is going to be. That has to be determined, and we'll go forward with maybe a private-public arrangement as we were doing in Project Two.
Thank you. Nate, you'll start this next question first. Employee cost is the largest expense for O P R F. According to the school report card, the administrative staff number increased sixty-one percent from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-four, which seems unsustainable. What will you do as a board member to keep these costs down?
Thank you very much. So we're going to work together collaboratively as a board, all seven of us, after April first. On April second, we're, we're the board, and we're going to work together, and we need to address that, especially since we've got the contract coming up next year. We have a number of ideas. There's competitive bidding that needs to be looked at. A lot of the vendors that we have have not been competitively billed, billed in a while. We've also need to look at employee benefits, and fortunately, Josh is an employee benefit specialist. So he's got a lot of expertise to bring to the board on that factor. And then, of course, we've got administrative overhead. In the last five years, we've increased the number of administrators, full-time equivalent administrators, by fifty percent, while the number of students have, has declined during the same period by five percent. So we need to look at every budget that's being spent, make sure the most money is being spent for our students and our teachers.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Thank you. So I think I'd like to take my time to talk about the evidence-based funding model, which is a model that schools across the state use to ensure that the spending on various, various budget items is within reasonable limits. So the state has some formulas based on the number of students in the school and things of that nature to give guidance on what's called an hundred percent, which is an adequacy level of spending on, you know, spending on teachers, spending on administrators, spending on librarians, et cetera. And I, O P R F currently is at a hundred and forty-two percent of adequacy, which puts us right smack dab in the middle of districts like our similar size, high school-only districts. So I think, you know, to me, as I've sort of responded to this, this talking point about the, the, the growth in administrative size, I've really pored over that model, and I don't, I don't see anywhere where the district is overspending in an egregious way.
Thank you. Dave?
Well, that's why you want to vote for Kathleen to be on the board because of her economic background. I don't have, I don't really have anything to add to that. It's based on what I've read and what I've seen. We don't have a disproportionately high number of, of administrators. And, and I think Fred will probably say something about that. And I think that we seem to be right in the middle, as, as Kathleen says, in comparison to similar schools in the area.
Thank you. Audrey?
Yeah, so first, with respect to the question about administrative bloat, the numbers on the state report card, unfortunately, about administrative information is actually incorrect. I went and pulled the data directly from the district, looking at where we were in two thousand twenty-one and where we were in two thousand twenty-four, and the difference is actually less than one full-time equivalent. The district has done a very good job of focusing on putting resources where we need them for our children. We've hired psychologists. We've hired trauma-informed specialists. We've done what we need for that. But this is a situation where unfortunately there's bad data out there, but it does not reflect correctly where the school is. And there's an individual who constantly pulls data from the schools, and he's gotten a FOIA request fulfilled that has the correct data, but somehow that correct data is not getting out there. And when it comes to employee benefits, the school's been doing a lot to reduce costs over the past five years, including like a working spouse surcharge, as well as encouraging individuals to get coverage elsewhere if they can and, and be incentivized for that.
Thank you. Fred?
Yes, I'm not exactly sure what they're talking about in, in, in the data that they're presenting in the question. I don't think it's accurate. I think Audrey is pretty good with data, so I'm, I'm, I tend to believe what she's saying. What has been added in the last several years are supports for our, our students. We came out of a pandemic where most of our students had some type, type of, of trauma, all right? And we added, we added to our support staff psychologists to each P S S team. We have social workers for each P S S team, and we hired a trauma-informed specialist to work with our children. So I don't believe that this is administrative bloat. I think what we did was we hired people to work directly with our students and give them the supports that they desperately need, the supports they desperately need.
Thank you. Josh? I'm sharing, Nate, sorry, right?
No, Josh is there.
Josh, yes.
Thank you. With respect to the discrepancy in the data, I'm concerned as far as either we're misreporting information to the state or there's an issue with data integrity, which is a problem because that's kind of how we make decisions, is based off of data. But as far as administrative expenses are concerned, even if our administrative expenses are on par, what I'd like to see is, is a shift of it towards, towards education, towards the students. I think that we can certainly do better in that respect. As far as the recent changes due to employee benefits, I applaud those. I have a proposal for a way to actually shift risk away from the district. Currently, the district is self-funded and, and has a variable cost as far as claims are concerned, and there are ways to give employees essentially a better arrangement by reimbursing their deductible and out-of-pocket expenses if they choose a spouses plan. It's not very common in northern Illinois, but it is common throughout other Midwestern states amongst public institutions.
Thank you. Kathleen, you'll have this next question first. The instructional coaches program that was started before the pandemic was canceled recently. Do you know what the cost of this experiment or this program was? And why was it not wound down sooner if it wasn't doing what it should?
Thank you for that question. I don't, I'm not familiar with that program, nor am I familiar with the cost or the rationale behind closing it. So I'll leave that answer to maybe some of the panelists who have more experience with, with boardwork. But I will take advantage of this gap in the time to highlight a couple of things. I'd just like to highlight some endorsements that Dave, Audrey, Fred, and myself have received in the last week or so. I want to let everyone know that the four of us have been endorsed by the Oak Park and River Forest Faculty Senate, which is the teachers' union, as well as the S C I U Local Seventy-Three, which is the union that represents the service workers within the building. So we're very proud to share that endorsement and to let the attendees know that the, the people who work in the school building every day have identified the four of us as members of the board who would be generative for them to work with as board members.
Thank you. Dave?
I too am not familiar with the cost of that program. I am very familiar with, with this program as it occurs in many, many schools and school districts around the state and around the Chicagoland area. I think it's a, I think it's a valuable, it, it's proved to be valuable in many schools, and I, and, and I, I don't know why it was, why, why it was ended, and I, I'm, I'm very interested in, in, in exploring why and, and whether or not it can be reinstated.
Thank you. Audrey?
Hi. So for the cost of the instructional coaches, I don't have the exact numbers. I'd have to look those up, but the coaches actually came from existing faculty staff, and so they would use a part of their time to, you know, to spare and help support teachers. When this was started, it was started as a way to try to provide more support to teachers. What was found is that as they evaluate the effectiveness, it was more effective to have the division heads and department heads to actually do that work. And so the shift and change that's happening now is that there is still support for teachers from an instructional perspective, but it's coming directly from their department leaders versus having separate, you know, separate individuals and being coaches. And those who have been doing instructional coach work, they're going, they're basically going, going back to do more teaching and be included. So it's going to just be reintegrated into the staffing and to the support that's provided to our students.
Thank you. Fred?
Okay, got it there. Yeah, I think it's about, the, the cost was about two point eight F T E, which, you know, if you, if you figure an average F T E of, of a hundred thousand dollars, we're at about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The, the reason for the program initially, all right, it was also a part of our restructuring of curriculum, and our, our teachers have spent scores and scores and scores of hours each in terms of professional development, of continuing education. And this, this was another facet of, of that, that programming. I think that we've, what we've found and what we've heard from the administration the other day about this program was they're just not getting the, the results that they thought they would have. So after a, a couple of years of the program, they realized that there might be a better way to do it, and that is to rely, like, like Audrey said, on the division heads and to, to terminate the program. You know, I, I think that's what you do with programs that you find that are not efficient or effective.
Thank you. Josh?
Yeah, thank you. So I think this was brought up at the March sixth board meeting. You know, I, I would question why it took six years to, to figure out that it wasn't effective. But one of the things that I think we've seen teachers request over and over again through the Five Essential Survey the last four years is that they want instruction from outside of the walls of the building. They really want to learn best practices from other districts and other instructors. It's not prohibited to share best practices from a teaching perspective. It is prohibited to share specific student information. So I think giving them an opportunity to broaden their professional development and expand their scope to understand best practices from other schools, perhaps schools that are in a similar situation as O P R F, can only be beneficial for everyone.
Thank you. Nate?
Yes, thank you. Looping back four seconds to the previous question. If there's bad data, as Josh said, it's coming from the school. That data came from the Illinois Report Card put out by ISBE, and they, they get the data from the schools. If you want to look at the actual data, it's at our website, gurtsmelmand200.com, at the Safeguarding Tax Dollars page, Footnotes two and three. During this question, it did come up last, at last Thursday's board meeting, and it's a little disappointing that it took six years, as Josh said, for the board to determine, hey, this isn't working. And oh, by the way, we don't even have any data that they collected on how effective it was. And it took them six years to figure this out for some reason. That's the reason why, quite frankly, you want Josh and me on the board, because we're going to be independent, strong thinkers who will ask good questions.
Thank you. Dave, you're going to get this next question first. How should the large pool in Project Two be used or scheduled after the school day? How will the community at large be allowed to benefit from it?
What I know now, because I have a, a child that's using this, the, the pool and would be using the pool like so many and will be there as late as ten o'clock tonight, that the pool is being used all the time. And, and so I, I look forward to, I think we all look forward to better facilities that would be available for our students, replacing a pool that was dozens of years old, maybe close to a hundred years old, and it certainly needed to be replaced. It also needs, it, it, it also should be available to people whenever the swim, whenever the swim teams are not using them, I think. It's, it seems to me this is a community, this should be available for a community as well.
Thank you. Audrey?
Yeah, I also want to go back to a previous question and answer, then I'll get to this. Relative to the data and the assumption that the school submitted wrong data for people who claim to ask good questions, asking good questions would be asking to understand where did the wrong data come from? In this case, the state put in the wrong data. So to go back to the question about the pool, our pools have always been used more broadly. We partner with the Park District. We partner with other clubs, so there's always been an opportunity for the pool to be used by the community. But to what Dave said, the pool is pretty heavily used by the school. Um, and so when the school is not using it, we already have partnerships where others are able to do it. So it's been a community asset, even in the old state, it's been a community asset for a long time. And it's something that we would see continuing to be a community asset, an asset. However, it is prioritized for our students and their activities, and so that's always going to take precedence.
Thank you. Fred?
Yes, well, the, the pool i- is one of our, the pools, the current pools, or I guess we have one now. Are, are one of the facilities that have constant use throughout the day. They're used every si- single period of the day. They're used after school with the priority of our, our, uh, students. Whether it's a sports team or synchronized ice swimming or, um, other, other type of, uh, um. Programming, uh, but we do have ex, uh, partnerships with the, with the park district. Uh, those will continue with, uh, some of the s- s- youth swim organizations that will continue. Um, I think there will probably be some, a little bit more expanded use. I think we'll have, uh, we'll see the public have a, a little, uh, little more opportunity, uh, to use the pool facilities.
Thank you. Josh?
So, um, I fully support, uh, continued intergovernmental agreements with the park district. I think that something like that could have been explored, uh, on the front end, uh, more so there were certainly opportunities. Uh, to, to find some sort of way to offset the, the costs as well through an intergovernmental agreement. But it is no, no secret that, uh, twenty-seven percent of our tax dollars go to the, go to the high school. So, uh, even those that don't have children in the school, it is a community asset. But, uh, but yeah, a- after school activities or, or, you know, on the weekends especially. I think an intergovernmental agreement with the park district perhaps offset some of the maintenance costs makes a lot of sense. Uh, they could do, you know, instruction and whatnot in the, in the winter when Ridgeland Commons is, you know, unusable.
Thank you. Nate?
Well, of course, the community should use it. They're paying for it. They're paying for over a hundred million dollars for this beautiful, brand-new pool. Of course, they should use it. Uh, just like the, uh, a- and, and quite frankly, the, especially for the Oak Park residents. Why should they pay more taxes for a brand-new pool that the park district, their park district is planning on putting in? Instead of just having the residents use this brand-new pool at the high school, it's ridiculous. Uh, we have I G A's intergovernmental agreements already, uh, with the park district. We have our softball team who's using Ridgeland Commons through an I G A. Our students use the park district's ice rink at Ridgeland Commons for classes during the day. No reason why the reverse couldn't be true and have the residents, uh, use our facilities at the pool. After the, uh, aquatic teams are done using it during the day and on the weekends and so forth. It's a community resource. Let's enjoy it by all.
Thank you. Kathleen?
So just to highlight again, project two is about a hundred million dollar project. And it includes absolutely a pool, much needed, as well as comprehensive athletic facilities. Arts facilities and a number of very important upgrades for accessibility, um, throughout the building. So the project is not a pool, it's a comprehensive athletic facility that includes a pool, number one. Number two, both of my kids learned to swim in the pools at O P R F. So there's a long history of the, the district collaborating and opening the doors to the community where possible. To share the recent, you know, many resources, including the resources of the pool. So, you know, those, those pools were old fifteen years ago when my kids were learning to swim. Um, and much-needed upgrades, absolutely. I guess the last thing, I mean, I just want to highlight again, the pool will be in use all day by students. I'm, almost every student in the, in the building, you know, at some point during the year takes swim classes and the athletic teams use them late into the night. So it will be, it will be well-used.
Thank you. Uh, Audrey, you'll start this next question first. The request to increase safety at O P R F has been met with a, um, uh, an increased security staff of about, I think. A little less than, um, forty. Has this additional staffing helped teachers and students feel safer? And have there been a decreased number of altercations or incidents, um, at the school? Since this staffing has been increased?
So when it comes to safety, I'm pleased to hear that our other candidates have adopted our focus on holistic approach to safety. That looks at physical safety, campus safety, as well as psychological safety and the, the environment. We have, as a school, seen a decrease in the number of altercations that are happening at the school. Um, coming into twenty-two, when we were the first full year back post-COVID, we saw a huge number of fights at the school. Those have continued to go down, um, for the last couple of school years. And with the new safety, um, director, campus safety director, as well as the team. They are continuing to put plans in place and continuing to work on ensuring that the building is secure. And has what it needs to protect our, our, our students. So I definitely see some decreases, which I think are really great. And then also the restorative practices that we use, such as our behavior education plan to address the disparity and out-of-school suspensions for our black students. Um, by understanding some of the behavioral pieces and what appropriate consequences are, that's helped as well.
Thank you. Fred?
Yes, um, I think we all, I, 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 I think this is, uh, a general tenet for all, for all, for all of the candidates. So we, we do want a safe and comfortable school for our, for our students. Uh, there has been in, in increase, uh, in, in our safety staff. But that's, that goes along with a, a, um, an increased vigilance. And the, the results of project one were to, were to focus things. In student services into the center of the building, so students, uh, can have access to them. Uh, and with extended hours. And I think that I, I agree with what, uh, Audrey said. We also be, expanded our, our, uh, our mental health access to students. Uh, we're, we're seeing, we, we had a tremendous, uh, decrease in, uh, out-of-school suspension issues. From twenty-three to twenty-four. Um, we'll, we'll see where it ends up this year, but we are on pace and on our plan. For, for, uh, for our behavior education plan.
Thank you. Josh?
Thanks. Um, I know that fighting did decrease last year. I know it is up again this year. Uh, I think that I would just recommend looking to the data and under, and trying to understand, uh, what that indicates. So, you know, according to the last Five Essentials survey, our safety rating, I think, decreased seventeen points, which is pretty, uh, dramatic. Uh, fifty-two percent of students said that they feel felt very unsafe or somewhat unsafe in the bathrooms. Forty-seven percent of students said the same about the hallways. So as far as using our resources in an intelligent fashion, I think we have to look to those two places first. To make sure that that's where our students are feeling safe. A, a lot of the bathrooms, because of, uh, vaping or, or whatnot in the bathrooms. Uh, Nate and I have already explored putting in, uh, some sort of basically like smoke alarm. But for vape, water vapor, to try and target that and minimize it so that students do feel comfortable using the washrooms. And then continue to explore how to make the hallways more safe as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Nate?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so Josh beat me to those, those statistics, uh, but just briefly again. Half the students feel unsafe in the hallways and bathrooms. Um, so I'm not too sure if the more, having more security staff is impacting, uh, that statistic. You always want to look at the effects, um, and the effect is that half the students do feel unsafe in those contexts, in those situations. Um, I also will say that for the current school year, there have been forty-one physical altercations or threats through January thirteenth of two thousand twenty-five. And that's almost as many as during the entire two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Um, I just, um, want to also point out that part of keeping the kids safe, that students safe. Is making sure not only that they're safe inside the school, but outside the school. And, uh, if you look at my OneView article, I touch on that a little bit with the wearable alert badges that we want to give to the staff. So we may have more staff, but we want to make sure that they have the tools they need. So if something does happen, it doesn't have to be an active shooter, God forbid, but it could be just a medical emergency in a classroom or on the football field. Or a, a, a fight, we want to make sure that we get the, the, the help needed in the quickest manner possible and the safest manner possible.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Peggy, could I ask you to just repeat the question, please?
Sure. Uh, the request to increase safety at O P R F has been met with an increased security staff of approximately forty. Um, a little less than forty. Had this addition, has this additional staffing helped teachers and students feel safer? And has it decreased the number of altercations have in the school?
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, yeah, so as Fred mentioned, um, there has been a decrease in the number of altercations over the previous school year. Um, the numbers were only partway through, so we don't know what the numbers will look like this year. But, um, you know, it looks like there has been some progress there for sure. I think I'd like to share what I have shared, um, previously, which is that, you know, as a mom, I am of course. Deeply concerned about safety within the school. Um, my children, you know, I ask my kids all the time about their feelings of safety in the school building. And they report that they feel that the campus is safe and secure, that they feel physically safe. Uh, and also that they feel psychologically safe. So I think, you know, I think really good work is being done on safety within O P R F. I think the investment in additional staff, um, is awesome. Nowhere is perfect. I think the bathrooms and the vaping issue, you know, those are known issues. Uh, and I, I know the security staff and the administration are focused on making improvements there.
Thank you. Dave?
Well, I, I can just repeat that. I think that, um. You know, it's obvious that we want it to be a safe school, that we all agree on that. Uh, we might have a, a slightly different a- approach. I, I'm glad, um, uh, that incidents are down and it may, they may have to do with, um, added, uh, security staff. Our approach is to make sure in building a safer school that we also. Focus on building a more inclusive school environment. It isn't just about discipline, it's, it's, you know, it's not, it's not about, um. Being, uh, uh, being tough, it's about fostering a culture where students feel safer and respected. Our, our, um, main focus is on restorative justice and not punitive justice. We want to restore people to the school and where they can feel safe and where they're part of the school. And not excluded unless they absolutely have to. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred, you'll get this other question, or you get this next question first, sorry. Um, the school report card shows that O P R F has a truancy rate of about nine percent. Um, how does this percentage compare to the districts that surround us? And what can you, as a school board member, do to address this issue?
Well, I think. I- if you talk to, and I, and I do on a regular basis, I have many friends in many of this, other suburban school districts that are comparable to ours. Um, and chronic absenteeism is one of the biggest issues, uh, that all schools are facing. Uh, there are, are different reasons for it and, uh, but it, it seems that it's gotten worse since the pandemic. But we all, we all struggle with it, not only us, but all of our, our, our peer districts. The, uh, the, the, uh. The thing I, I think that we need to do is drill down, like we're drilling down in, with our, um. In, in our academic achievement, uh, to determine the supports the kids need. We need to drill down to find the causes, alright, and to, uh, figure out solutions. For this chronic at absenteeism. And just one quick little thing, a note that it, the chronic absenteeism is what kept us, uh, from being a, an exemplary school.
Thank you. Josh?
Sure, so, um, you know, I, I think Fred did say it well, that, that the chronic absenteeism. And, and truancy is, is up, is elevated. Uh, I think Oak Parks is a little bit, uh, higher than some of the other ones. But, but I don't think it's, it's a, a unique scenario. Uh, need to find out why, right? One of the things that, that I've discussed with the, uh, the collaboration for early childhood is just making sure that, that. You know, we establish strong relationships with families as early as possible, uh, to understand the value of school. I know that's a long time off, but, uh, oftentimes by the time, uh, they reach high school, a lot of problems were kind of inheriting. That have been in place for, for quite some time before that. And, but, uh, to the extent it's transportation-related, then we have to look at transit options. Uh, but, you know, basically collect the data, make sure that we're getting in front of it. Before it becomes a statistic, before it becomes an issue, because if kids aren't in school, they aren't going to learn. It's the, you know, long, short of it.
Thank you. Nate?
Thank you. Uh, it, it is one of those factors, um, that is keeping us from being an exceptional school. Um, and we do want to look at various options, because one of the things that Josh mentioned or briefly touched upon. Is that perhaps one of the reasons why we have truancy is that it is difficult to get to school. The northwest corner of River Forest, it's three miles from the school. Uh, the southwest corner of River Forest is two and a half miles from southeast Oak Park, it's a mile and a half. And the, according to state law, we can, um, provide bus service to those students if the board wants to. I'm not saying we should, uh, but it's just something to look at. And in addition to the benefit of maybe getting this kids to school on time. Um, is to reduce the environmental im- impact of all the, those cars and buses. Uh, all those cars and so forth, go, going to the school at the same time and leaving at the same time, as well as the safety of the kids. Um, I will also say that, uh, another thing that is impacting the, um, school report card. And keeping us from exemplary schools is the, um, is the, is the, um. Ninth grade being ninth, having ninth graders on track. Uh, we are last amongst our peers for having ninth graders on track. One in four of our black students are failing two or more core classes. And one in five of our Hispanic students in the ninth grade are failing two more core, core classes. So all that truancy and that, and a few others, but those are the big ones, are impacting, uh, are, uh, are keeping us from being an excellent school.
Thank you. Kathleen?
So I think the truancy rate, um, as others have mentioned, is probably a little bit higher at O P R F. Than at some of our peer districts, but this certainly is an issue that, that the high school districts in particular, um, are, are working with. Across the state and across the country following the pandemic, um, as kids are recovering and, um, and overcoming those pandemic effects. So I think I'd like to highlight, um, the support teams that are in place for every student. So every student at O P R F has a support team that includes, um, their, uh, counselor. Who helps with class selection and college prep when it's time, things like that. Also includes a social worker, also includes the dean who oversees things like attendance. And I think that those, I know, um, even from my own experience, that those professional staff work closely together. They keep a close eye on kids and they're very communicative with parents as attendance issues crop up. So I think there's some, again, great work being done, uh, to address a challenging problem.
Thank you. Dave?
I'm in many schools in the area and, um, I don't think that the truancy problem is, is, um. You know, drastically different than it is in other schools. It's, it's a problem in a lot of schools. And one thing you have to look, look at is just, um, pandemic and post-pandemic trauma. They, there's a lot of anxiety, there's a lot of, uh, depression, there's, uh, yeah, a lot of kids aren't happy. It's, it's a very, very stressful world. Uh, yes, transportation could help, get the kids, kids to school. But honestly, the, the central thing that, that I think, um, that the school is, is working to do well. And maybe could do better, but is, 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 is through the support staff. When, when, when you go to, when you go to the school, uh, and, and for the first time and you're meeting with, uh, with, with the staff. The first people you talk to are counselors and they say, our main purpose is for kids to feel safe and happy. And, 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 and for them to want to come to school. And that's, and that, you know, that has to do with instruction, it has to do with counseling, it has to do with. All of the staff, that, that feeling of, of, uh, welcome and that feeling of safety. So all of those things are connected.
Thank you. Audrey?
Yeah, um, thanks. And, and this is one that is really a challenge. I mean, as has been mentioned by several of the candidates. Um, the reasons that kids don't make it to school or maybe apps are multifaceted. Dave just talked about some of the depression and anxiety, which has been on the rise, um, for our students. We know transportation has come up. Um, there are students who have home responsibilities. They have younger siblings to take care of and people to get out and other things to do before they come to school. And then we have families who just simply pull their kids out of school to go on vacation. So it's a really broad and really wide reasons why that happens. And as a board member, our role would be to really work with the. And as a board member, our role would be to really work with the administration to understand what they're trying to understand, what data they can bring to us about the issue and to be able to put metrics in place to track, you know, what might be the most effective, what might be cost us, you know, maybe helpful on a cost standpoint, but really to oversee and monitor and see whether what we're putting in place can actually help our students. But it's something that I believe across school districts is just a problem that we're going to have to continue to try to chip away with, with a lot of different strategies.
Thank you. Uh, Josh, you're going to start this next question first? How much sway should school board members have over curriculum? And should those issues be the main focus of educators instead of the school board?
Well, I think it's, it's largely going to be driven by the educators and by the administration. Absolutely. Um, the school board's role is to govern and to be expression of the will of the people as far as how they want the school district to be managed. Uh, so to the extent that, uh, we are not heading in the right direction or that we are, that, that the electorate feels that, that we want to change the curriculum, we want to change the subject matter, we want to change the focus, uh, then my role would be to instruct the administration and the professionals to, to find or assemble different options and to put together new curriculum and then make a decision like, uh, you know, to that respect. But a lot of the, the selection, the design, the options, that's all going to be done by professional educators and administrators. And then the implementation would also be done by the administration and the educators as well. So, uh, yeah.
Thank you. Nate?
Thank you. Uh, so obviously the number one mission of our district is to educate our students. Uh, so it is the board's role to set policy, to set direction and give direction to the administration so that they can then implement it. Uh, and then we have to evaluate it, see if it's working. Um, one of the, um, uh, things that, uh, one of the, we have a number of signs hanging in our back sunroom. Uh, one of them is the, the sign says, ask good questions. And I often told my kids when I dropped them off at school, when I, when I did that, uh, to ask good questions. I didn't, wasn't too concerned about the answers, but I want to make sure they ask good questions. And so to the extent that's possible, I want to make sure that our teachers are doing that. We, we're teaching our students to, to think, not to come up with one answer, but to think about what the, the, what the data is. Look at all the data. Look at all the ideas and come to their own conclusions. That, that's ultimately what school is about, to teach the students to do that. Uh, and so when, as a board member, looking at what our educational plan is, the pedagogy and the techniques we use to, um, to, to, in our classrooms, that's kind of the, the, what's always going to be in the back of my mind. I want to make sure the kids are learning how to think.
Thank you. Kathleen?
So this is a great opportunity to just, um, remind everyone, especially the, um, the audience of the roles of the board. So the board really has three roles, um, to hire the superintendent and manage the superintendent, to oversee and manage the budget and to set policy. So, um, I think, you know, the spirit behind this question is ab- absolutely right, which is it's not the role of the board to set curriculum. Uh, it's the role of the board to, uh, set objectives, right, to set policy, uh, to set desired outcomes, but really not to set curriculum. That is absolutely, in my view, the purview of the educators who are trained uh, to do so. That's their job. And I, I know again from personal experience that the, um, the teachers and educators at OPRF do a wonderful job, a wonderful job of teaching kids to think critically uh, and a wonderful job of designing meaningful curriculum.
Thank you. Dave?
What, what Kathleen said and, and maybe also what Nate said, uh, the, the, the main reason we're, we're here is, is because we want to educate, uh, the students and I think the teachers are doing a great job. Um, we set the policy, we set policies, we set, uh, we talk, we, we, we talk about principles. We work with the uh, superintendent who works with the teachers. Uh, we don't work directly with them, but we were to the extent that, that policy and curriculum are i- in a sort of a reciprocal relationship, we, we are in conversation with, with, with what the teachers are doing. We're interested in them and in, in what they're doing and, and we care about what the effect is on the, on the students and that will, uh, uh, and we'll, we'll do research, um, on what they're doing in order to help the student, help the superintendent, help the teachers and the, um, uh, improve of what's going on. You know, we're still in a couple of years into the freshman, um, all honors curriculum and, um, uh, there are some changes that, that need to be made and, um, you know, we want to be part of that, uh, that process of, of continuing to improve that curriculum.
Thank you. Audrey?
Yeah, um, you know, I agree with mostly with, with what's been said. It is not the role of the board to set curriculum. There's absolutely the purview of the teacher. Um, as a leader, I trust the people that I hire. I hire them for their expertise. Um, I hire them for what they can bring and I listen to them. And so with our, us hiring the superintendent and the superintendent hiring his team, we, you know, count on them to use their expertise and their knowledge to bring to us recommendations for what would best help our students from a curriculum perspective. And then from an oversight, uh, we help make sure there are metrics in place that we know what outcomes we're going for, how do we measure those, and then how do we hold people accountable for those? And that is a model that works really well. And one example to go to, to within our school um, has been the issue that was brought up about ninth graders on track. And we recognize that there are challenges. And recently the curriculum team came to the board with information about a way for students to recover credit. Um, that would work with them individually, get underneath what they might need and help them not have to retake classes. And so that's the kind of, um, relationship we want to keep.
Thank you. Fred?
So, so I think everybody's really kind of on the same page here. Um, we, we all agree and I, I, and I, I think, uh, for, so people understand the governance of the board. Uh, there are seven, seven members of Board of, Board of Education. Uh, but we speak with one voice. We, we have one employee and that is our superintendent. Our superintendent is the CEO. He hires the remaining staff. He implements the po- policies that are created by the board. All right. And, um, he also create, they, he creates a budget to be approved by the board. Um, so I, it is not the board's role really to have sway over curriculum in, in any, in any way. However, we do, we do oversee and question. And, uh, but we do not, uh, i- it's not our purview. That's not, we're not the experts. The experts are the people in the building. Uh, they've been educated. Uh, we have outstanding faculty. Uh, and they are really the experts in curricular issues.
Thank you. Um, Nate, you're going to start this next question first? Do you believe all school referendum bonds or long-term debt certificates should be put before voters for approval? And what would that pro- how would that process then affect project plans?
So, so the question is, should all, I'm sorry, should all school?
Referendum bonds or long-term debt certificates, should they be put before voters for approval?
All right. So what should be vote, put before voters for approval or capital expenditures? We had a recently, recent referendum where the voters expressed a desire that if it's more than $5 million, we put it before the, the voters. And I think we need to really take that into account as a board member. Um, and, and quite frankly, the, the practical effect is we have to, uh, for any big expenses coming up. We had this, the last referendum we had was in 2002 and that was the referen- referendum that got everybody angry because it accumulated this huge, uh, reserves of funds. The number one concern we have right now in the community financially, it's earned back community trust. And in four or five years, our reserve is going to go down to about 25, $30 million. And that's the minimum that we are allowed to have according to board policy. So there's no money left to fund projects three, four and five. We have to go to the voters for referendums if we do those projects. Any, the bottom line is if it's a long-term capital project, we go to the voters.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Yeah, I agree with that. I think, you know, given the financial position of the district at this point, um, and in general, large capital expenditures, building projects, things like that, that require borrowing, um, should go to voter referendum. I think that makes a lot of sense. There are, there are a lot of exceptions uh, in terms of, you know, different types of, of bonds and things like that. It can be used for short-term funding, emergency funding, um, you know, if the roof collapses and, and the repairs need to be made quickly. Obviously that's not something that you have time to put out to voters. So there is a, there's a portfolio of types of borrowing that the school can use depending on what the situation is. But I am in agreement with the, um, with what Nate just said in terms of large planned capital projects. Um, as I said earlier, would need to be debt funded and that debt would need to be approved by the voters through a referendum.
Thank you. Dave?
I don't disagree with Dave on that point. I mean, a- any large expenditures are going to have to come to the voters. It's going to have to happen. I thought that there might have been a question behind that question that maybe Fred will answer uh, about the extent to which voters were, um, allowed a, a voice in the, in the, in the process, but I, I, I'll defer to him on that. I, I mean, ba- basically I agree with both, uh, Kathleen and Nate on that.
Thank you. Audrey?
Peggy, could you repeat the question? There was a second part. I want to make sure that I got that as well.
Okay, no problem. Do you believe all school referendum bonds or long-term debt certificates should be put before voters for approval? And if they do, uh, agree, how would that process affect project plans and their implementation?
Great, thank you. That's a piece I wanted to make sure that I heard because as husband said, um, I do agree that when there is a large planned capital project, as Kathleen said, um, that it needs to go before. We need to be careful about allowing ourselves flexibility because things do come up that we may not anticipate or may not be, you know, be expecting and we need some flexibility around that. But in general, I think it does, um, it should be put before voters. With respect to that kind of how would that impact projects, um, it just really gets to the planning piece. Because if you're planning, you're going to have to plan your projects around cycles when there are actually votes happening so that you can actually put things on referendum. That can have the impact of delaying work that needs to be done. And that's where the flexibility comes in. We need to un- understand where and what we might be able to do, uh, without going to referendum and have policy around that. And then where do, and, and where does the normal process, uh, flow? But it definitely will impact timing of when you can get projects done.
Thank you. Fred?
You want to mute Fred?
I'll, I'll say this is that, um, in this, I, I feel this is directed at me. Um, because I did vote, um, to go forward with project two, uh, using debt certificates and, uh, which, which was a change of mind from a statement I made in 2019. And I made that statement before there was a pandemic. Before there was, um, in- interest rates that had s- significantly increased. And in, before there was inflation that had also significantly increased. So I think circumstances change. We had a large fund balance. Um, I, I, I thought we should have been accumulating debt, uh, while we had, um, especially for safety items, life safety issues, while we had, um, uh, virtual zero interest rates. Um, but I, I think that, that, uh, it depends on the situation, the normal course of business. Yes, I think that, that, uh, that debt, especially in the form of bonds, um, should be in front of the, uh, voters.
Thank you. Josh?
Yes, should go to referendum. Yes, the voter should decide. Um, there's no question that, uh, to the extent that we might need maintenance or, or whatnot here and there. I think I would also recommend looking to our resources, uh, making sure that we are tapping, uh, appropriate community members to help us perhaps avoid some of those referenda, right? So if we do need maintenance or, or repairs, uh, trying to find efficient ways to do it, using professionals within our community. Um, and having, uh, them weigh in on perhaps cost-effective measures, what can be pushed off, what cannot, uh, things of that sort. But absolutely, big projects has to, it has to go to, to referenda. You're right, uh, government's not the most efficient. Uh, we have to wait for a vote. Uh, but you know what? That's part of the beauty of democracy and, and, and so, you know, I would still defer to the voters.
Thank you. Uh, Kathleen, you'll do this, uh, have this next question first? Um, with the national mental health crisis being reported for the ages of 12 to 18, what additional support can our school supply to these young people? Um, there was just an article in the Tribune today that schools shouldn't start before eight thirty because teenagers are not getting their sleep and, and we, the later that they start, the better it is for them. Um, what other changes need to be made to support current models for better mental health for our students?
Thank you. Uh, thank you for that. Yes, I'm, I'm aware of the earliness of the eight o'clock start for sure. So I think since, I mean, since forever, but especially since the pandemic, as we've talked about earlier, there have been challenges with mental health, um, for, for teens. And I think, again, I highlighted, you know, OPRF has some really nice teams, support teams in place um, for students who may be running into challenges to either provide resources or get them connected to resources that they need to help with mental health. I think climate is really, really important. I think we can't underestimate the power of a sense of belonging and a sense of inclusion within an institution like a school where students spend hours of every day. Um, I think belonging is tremendously important. I think professional resources within the building are tremendously important. And I think we have to listen to kids and take their, um, take their words and take their actions and take their views really, really seriously in order to respond and support their mental health.
Thank you. Dave?
Yeah, we're in a mental health crisis. There's no question about it nationally. And of course it happens, whatever happens nationally is hap- happening here. It's a, it's a, uh, nice, small, safe village in, in general, uh, but, but we still have all of these problems here. I, I, I said that I appreciated that the counselors open the session to meet the parents and say, we, this is our priority. And, uh, uh, probably during and after the, 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 um, the pandemic, um, you know, there, there was a, it, it was an increase in mental health issues and every teacher knew it. And, um, uh, teachers, um, began to be encouraged as they were, as they are at Oak, Oak Park to, to not only care about, um, the, the test scores and, and how, or in GPA, but, but whether people are feeling okay. It seems to me that's, that's really, really im- important for, for, for all schools, all teachers and all, all communities. We can't just be focusing on, on academic numbers. We have to be, we have to care about the safety of our, the psychological safety of our kids.
Thank you. Audrey?
And, and I'll pick up where Dave left off. Um, the psychological safety of our kids is really important. And one of my priorities is continued funding of our mental health and wellness resources. The schools put a lot of resources behind mental health and supporting students over the past several years. And that's something that we have to make sure continues to be a priority within our budget because it has such an impact on students' ability to learn and engage. And then connected to that, um, is the school environment and the climate and culture, which is also a priority and making sure students have that sense of belonging. Um, one thing that we added for students are mental health days. So they can take off, I believe, the five mental health days now, um, during the school year to be able to recognize that sometimes our kids just need a break and need to be able to step away. And I think with the support from the PSS teams, the people support teams with the social workers and the psychologists and the counselors, the wellness days that they do at school regularly, the Husky Wellness, if you've not seen that, it offers wonderful resources. And we just need to make sure we keep staying close to our kiddos and providing them with help that they might need.
Thank you. Fred?
If you're muted again.
Sorry, I keep, keep missing that. Uh, I think the, the subject of school start times is an important one. We've had some, uh, you know, uh, probably preliminary, uh, conversations about it. Um, I know I had a daughter who was a very high achieving student about, about, uh, seventeen, eighteen years ago and she would be up till one, one o'clock in the evening. And she would be up till one, one o'clock in the evening and get up for her badminton practice, you know, to get there at six, six thirty in the morning. So it is stressful. I know the Naperville just had, one of the Naperville districts just had a large discussion about it. And they, they've agreed to amend some of their start times. But I also think it's, it's something that has to be done collaboratively, collaboratively with our feeder districts with D ninety-seven in D ninety, so that we, that, that we can mesh i- in, in terms of school day times. So not to put it, you know, an overly burdensome is situation on, on parents and families.
Thank you. Josh?
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't think anyone here really disagrees with, with the mental health is, is a big issue. I know that I took a mental health day or two when I was in school. It happens to the best of us. But, but yeah, reinvestment in resources, I think improved professional resources for teachers to, to help them, not to put more burden on teachers, but also to help them maybe identify. It's possible that, I mean, our teachers do spend the most time with our kids and it's possible that they might not know to identify that things are, are not okay, right? Signs of withdrawal and, and whatnot, signs of depression. And enough to, to say something to, to perhaps nudge the student to get those resources. Also collaborating with the village, the village and the town, especially the township has great mental health resources, making those available, popularizing them, not just to, to students, but to families as well, because it doesn't just start with the kid. Sometimes it, it runs deeper.
Thank you. Nate?
So with only one minute to talk about, I just want to focus in on one thing, and that's teen suicide. There was a high school in Utah that for probably six or seven years straight had one or two suicides a year. The principal, after that string of, of awful suicides, got his staff together and brainstormed. And they came up with what was called the Hope Squad. And they asked the students, and it was about a comparable high school to OPRF, it was a large high school. They asked them, who would you talk to if you had, if you had an issue? And inevitably, forty student names, about forty student names rose to the top. And since that, and they formed that, that club, and then they trained those students on how to deal with these issues. And they called that club the Hope Squad. And since that initiation of that club, there have been zero suicides in that school. And since then, there have been over two thousand of these clubs, Hope Squads in high schools around the country. And we should have one at OPRF too.
Great, thank you. This will be the last question before closing statements. Dave, you're going to start it off first. What is the one thing, what one thing does the high school do well for its students and staff? And what, what, and what one thing can it improve on? One thing of each.
Just one?
Just one.
Okay. I think in spite of the fact that we missed out on the, the highest rating, I think this is a really, really good school because, because the teachers are great. They, they really care about their students and they really work hard to prepare them for work or, or, you know, the life after school, maybe college or a, a, anything that the student wants to do. I, I think in general, in general, they're working very hard to do that. I think that we have some, some continuing issues of, about of health and safety that, that persist. Not everybody feels safe. There's antisemitism, there's Islamophobia, there's racism in the school. I don't think it's widespread, but I do think it's persistent and I think it needs to be continually addressed. And, and I, I, I think that's, that's something that I'm concerned about.
Thank you. Audrey?
So what I think that our school does best is it gets our kids ready for what's next. We have kids who go to college and will tell you that they feel so well prepared that sometimes it seems easier than when they were at OPRF. We have career and college pathways to have kids who might want to take a different path to help them get out. And for our special education children, what we do with site, with our kind of community integration transition education is to prepare these kids with life skills to be able to be out on their own. I think it's simply wonderful. So getting our kids ready for what's next. I think our high school does an excellent job of that. Where the opportunities are and what we're working on is really how do we address the kids who are left out? And particularly, how do we address disparity, disparity with our black, with our black children with respect to out-of-school suspension? How do we make sure that we have academic rigor for everyone and that we meet those very differing needs of students who may not have come out of our feeder schools or who just may have other challenges of trauma? And just really making sure that we can get to those kids who have been left behind.
Thank you. Fred?
Yeah, I, I hundred percent agree with, with what Audrey said. I, I think the, the, the greatest thing that we do is prepare our kids for the next step. And when, when you talk to students, when they come back from, from college or wherever they may have gone, junior college, the, the armed forces, they, they all feel that Oak Park or Forest High School is giving them something special that their peers have not experienced. And I think that has to do with our diversity in our, in our equity programming. What we can do more is what I would like to see do more is, is have more vocational pathways for our students, especially our students who may not be college bound. We cut some of those back that I didn't, that were around when I was in school. And we're starting to slowly bring them. But I think we need those, those vocational opportunities for our students if they're not college bound.
Thank you. Josh?
I don't remember to mute. So I, I think, I think one of the things we do very well is the number of extracurriculars and the wide array of extracurriculars that we offer. It's, it's very impressive. There's a lot of opportunity to do things that I would have never dreamt of doing when I was in, in high school. There's a lot of interaction with the surrounding community with the, you know, with Dominican, with Triton as far, as far as opportunities to get involved. That does go to, to preparation, right? And, but one of the things that I think that we could really improve upon is, is accommodating all students, making sure they all feel safe. I think that, you know, whether that is discrimination, prejudice, you know, unconscious bias, those are definitely opportunities that we have to improve. Work on professional development as well as making sure that we're enforcing our policies uniformly.
Thank you. Nate?
Thank you. I, I think the, and some of the others have already touched on this, but our greatest strength really is the size of our school. It's a huge school. And because it's a huge school, we can offer a lot to everybody. My three kids have had a wonderful educational experience at OPRF. And I want to make sure that every student now and in the future can have those same kind of opportunities. The thing that we can most improve on, and I've already touched upon it, is that obviously, our number one purpose for existing is to educate kids. And if we can't educate all the kids and get them over the, the finish line and graduate, it, it, it's a problem. And, and so there's obviously concerns going into the ninth grade that we can't affect to a large degree. But once we get them, we can't. And we have to use the strategies that have been proven study after study. And you go to our website, persmelmanD two hundred dot com, you'll see it. And basically, it comes down to, to the big ones are tutoring and intensive summer programs. And we want to make sure that those are available to everybody, but especially those ninth graders that are off track and are failing classes and are at risk of not graduating.
Thank you. Kathleen?
I think my answers are similar to what others have said. I mean, I think one of the greatest strengths, probably the greatest strength of OPRF is the wide array of opportunities that it offers to students. I think, you know, almost every student can find a, a place and a pathway at OPRF. And that's both academically. The academic preparation is very strong, but as Josh mentioned, the extracurriculars, the arts, the music program, the theater program, those are incredible. I went to a tiny high school in rural Washington State and the opportunities at OPRF are like beyond the wildest dreams of my teenage self. In terms of one thing that, that needs to improve, I think I'll, I'll lift up the equity gap, right? OPRF is doing a great job in many ways, but there still are gaps in achievement between white students and students of color. And that is an issue, one that a lot of work has been done to address and one where work needs to continue.
Thank you. We're going to do closing statements now. Audrey, you're going to start off with our first one for closing statements.
So our district is a complicated, diverse and serious organization. And we frankly need knowledgeable and experienced and inclusive, a high integrity leader to lead it. My priorities are having a safe and exclusive, inclusive school climate and culture, continued funding of mental health resources and wellness resources for our students, and excellent execution of our strategic plan, which covers racial equity, transformative leadership, transformative education, operations, facilities and finances and communications, because our plan is a roadmap for what we need to do for our district. I bring to the board both a high degree of integrity and strong leadership. I have relevant experience and I have a commitment to service. You can find out more about my priorities and about my background experiences at audreyfor, F O R, D two hundred dot com. And I really thank you for listening tonight.
Thank you. Fred?
Yes, I want to end with a little story because of what's going on in this country today. Last Saturday, our Special Olympics team won the state championship. And these are students who are disabled. All right, they may have downs, they may be autistic, they may have all sorts of other maladies. But these, but students like that, that had those issues when I was in school back fifty years ago, weren't in our building. And they are embraced by our community in our, in, within the building with our faculty, staff and their fellow students. When you go to one of those basketball games, they get, they get more cheers and louder cheers and bigger crowds than the varsity basketball team is. So this is what DEI is, all right? And it's not just a benefit for those students. All right, it's a benefit for the, for the rest of the students. One of our greatest activities, Josh was talking about activities, is our best buddies. And those are our, our, our older leaders who engage with these students. So I'm just going to leave it with that, that this is what DEI is all about.
Thank you. Josh?
So, you know, I hope af- after all this, I leave you thinking that I can be a, you know, a rational and open and, you know, serious listener and advisor on the board. I've worked professionally with the business of advising schools in throughout the Midwest for years now. So I, you know, I understand it. I understand some of the strategies in dealing with personnel. I understand collective bargaining. Nate and I, I think more than anything, we offer a, a, a new view and a new perspective on things and an opportunity to, to improve some of the things that, that we feel are, need to be improved. On a, on a separate note, you know, first, while I'd love you to, that you vote for me, I want to encourage everyone to vote. And second of all, I'd like us to return to a place of peaceful, civil dialogue in, in political spectrums. I think that there's too much negativity in the world and we need to remove it.
Thank you. Nate?
Thank you. Thank you, Peggy, again, and thank you to the League of Women Voters. If you want strong, critical thinkers who will ask tough questions on the D two hundred school board, you will want to vote for Josh Gertz and me. We are running to keep all kids safe. As board members, we have a serious obligation to consider the safety of the entire student body. Half of our students feeling safe in the school's hallways and bathrooms. We must do better. We want to ensure that each child has a challenging academic environment that sets them up for success. We can do better than being last amongst our peer districts on ninth graders passing all their core classes. We can do better than having one in four of our black students and one in five of our Hispanic students failing two or more classes in the ninth grade. And we want to safeguard taxpayer resources. We need to earn our community's trust that we can properly prioritize and spend the tax dollars we do have. Josh Gertz and I want to be your independent voices on D two hundred who will ask good, tough questions. We're asking for your vote on April first. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Thank you. So thanks, Peggy, for moderating and thanks to all of the panelists. My priorities as a board member will be deliberate financial management, high-quality academic programs for all students, measurable progress on our equity gaps. And this last one, I really want to focus on calm and engaged leadership as the district navigates unpredictable times. So we've talked a lot about known issues tonight. And I want to really lift up and highlight that, that we are living through an unprecedented time in public education. We've watched just this week significant dismantling of, for example, the Office of Civil Rights within the Department of Education. And there will be things that we absolutely cannot predict at this moment that will happen in the next four years during this term. So I think as you're choosing for whom to cast your vote, I encourage you to think about who will you want at the board table in those unpredictable moments when difficult decisions and difficult situations need to be navigated? It would be an honor for me to serve in that way. I hope that you vote. Early voting opens March seventeenth. Election Day is April first. Then it would be an honor to serve on the school board.
Thank you. You're taking my thunder away from me, Kathleen. David, Dave, you're next?
Thanks again to the League of Women Voters and the library for hosting this event and Peggy for moderating. And for all of you who are still listening out there, with the Department of Education being gutted even as we speak, civil rights offices being closed, as a threat of stolen resources looms, contrary to the very values we have in District two hundred of honoring diversity and equity and inclusion, we need to have a board that, that has schooling experience, that has stability. So I urge you to vote for Fred, Audrey, Kathleen and me. I repeat, just with respect to myself, I have more than four decades of experience in education, you know, and, you know, I've written books on the relationship between social justice and education. If you want my background in education as one voice on the board, vote for me. I very much want to serve my community that has given so much to, to me and my family. I also offer my passionate, calm, reasoned, informed and constructive voice to a serious collaborative effort to serve the community. I'm a good listener and promise I will listen to and take seriously every concern that comes before me. True, I'm a write-in candidate, so you'll have to write my name on the ballot. But you know, we'll help you as April one approaches. Thanks, everybody, for listening.
Well, thank you. I will tell you, fifty-two years ago, I did my student teaching at OPRF. That pool was much different at that time, much different. But I do thank all the candidates for their time tonight and for choosing to run for local office. Democracy is not a spectator sport. It, it at times can be, as been insinuated, kind of combative. But that's the, the, the positive and the negative of it. And I, I want to remind everybody that a recording of this event will be posted on our webpage and also the library's YouTube channel. Again, early voting starts March seventeenth with Election Day on Tuesday, April first. More election information is on our website. Please remind your friends, your neighbors, your relatives. They need to vote in this election. Local elections are important. That's where everything starts and it goes up from there. So again, tonight, thank you all for your interest and attendance and good luck to all of you.